Good evening, the time is six o'clock, we will call the April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five Board of Education meeting to order. Ms. Greer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Norris, here.
Ms. Holgren.
Here.
Ms. Elvin.
Here.
Ms. Madison.
Ms. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Herringman.
Ms. Tans.
Here.
Ms. Tyler.
Here.
Okay, the approval of agenda is next, we have the agenda that was sent to us prior to today's meeting, was sent late last week, in accordance with the board meeting materials last week as well. Any questions on this agenda?
No.
Okay, hearing now without objection, we'll pass a motion to approve the agenda by unanimous consent, is there an objection to doing so? Hearing none, the agenda is hereby approved, we will go to the consent agenda. That also was included in the materials. Are any questions on the consent agenda? Without objection, we will pass a motion to approve the consent agenda by unanimous consent, is there an objection to doing so? Hearing none, the consent agenda is hereby approved, and we will go now to our fourth item, which is Students of the Month. Superintendent, I'm doing it.
Thank you, Director Brandy North. Ms. North?
Welcome to our Student of the Month, everyone, so glad to see you.
Get excited, okay?
Hello to our board and our cabinet, so grateful to be here and have the opportunity to present to our wonderful babies today, who have earned Student of the Month for March, so I'm going to start right here, and his mother's going to help me. We have our first student, which let me start with this, both of them are lessenger rebels, so if you know me, rebel is resilient, empowered, brilliant, ethical, loving, and self-assured, and all of my children are exactly that. So I'm so excited to introduce our students of the month. My first student of the month is a young name, a young man, Roman Lewis, who is in Ms. Whitfield's class, come on up here, Roman. Okay, I'm gonna say a little something about Roman. Yes, come on. So, Roman is a part of our Oak Park family as a lessenger rebel, but we also have his wonderful grandmother who works at Einstein. Yes, so they're all the way interwoven into our Oak Park family. Roman is a wonderful student. Roman has come so far this year, both academically and socially emotionally. He has built wonderful friendships in his class, and his teacher says he's an integral part of their classroom community. He is helpful, he has learned to use his words to express his feelings, as well as his academics have grown immensely. Roman comes in and puts his best foot forward every single day, and we are so proud of this young man, and we love him with all of our souls, so let's give it up for Roman. Now, you're a lessenger rebel, you're a little spoiled, okay? So here, Roman, we have your award, what do they have? You have an award from lessenger, you have one from Oakland County. You have your lessenger t-shirt, your lessenger rebel bear, and some sunglasses for you to put on, okay? For when you go out on the playground, so we're gonna take a picture with Grandma and all of your stuff, okay? Okay. Okay, come on over here. Hey, come on, Miss Mother. Here. Now, look at the phone, okay? Look at the phone, baby, Roman, look at the phone. Thank you. I took a shot. All right, so is my next student of the month, is she here, Bella Staples? Bella Staples, I don't see Bella yet, so I'll just go ahead and give her her shout out. So Bella Staples is in Ms. Guy's class. Bella is such a gem, she is helpful, she is thoughtful, she is always looking out for her classmates, helping them with work, helping them problem solve, using her six steps of conflict resolution. She's able to talk so many of her classmates through problems. She is so peaceful, too, her energy, just the way that she addresses situations, kids can be very upset, and she speaks so calmly to help them de-escalate the situation. She's a future social worker, therapist, something, we're so proud, we're so proud of her, just her, her whole energy and spirit, so we're so thankful to have Bella, and again, she has grown both, uh-oh, she's grown, she's, I'm loud, she's grown both academically and socially emotionally as well, they're hitting, she's hitting all of her targets for our preschool programs, so I want to take a moment to shout out Bella Staples, we love her, and we are proud of her, yes, thank you. Okay, so I'll make sure she gets, and if she comes in before it's over, I'll shout her out again. So what I'm going to do now is pass it to my, okay, pass it to my esteemed colleague, the one and only Principal Prince from Key Elementary, who's going to come up here for Key, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Norris. I am Ms. Amelia Prince, the proud principal of Key Elementary, and today I have a few friends with me. I would love to introduce to you our wonderful students of the month. And before we go to our first one, Mr. Patrick Avery, I'm gonna bring up his teacher, Ms. Tienda, who will be able to give you some words about Patrick.
Good evening. I share Patrick with Ms. Thomas, but she was out today, so I get to, I get to take all the credit. All right, Patrick Avery is a fun kid full of fourth grade riz. Charisma for those of us of a certain age. Just check out his shirt, no time to be bored. He himself has no time to be bored, since he is an avid gamer, who by his own admission plays a lot. He is a big fan of Roblox, Minecraft, Fortnite, and Demon Slayer. Patrick is friendly and always willing to help out his classmates, whom he believes will have his back. Kids like to be around Patrick because he is kind and generous and always has a smile. He's one of the few students that can be partnered with anyone else, and it won't be a problem, because everyone likes him. Patrick also likes to mess with his mom for fun. He will often barge into the room wherever she is and break into dance, and I think that that must be an awesome sight to behold. I give you Patrick Avery.
What a black and gold balloon, oh, look at that. What lovely colors of the balloon.
All right, so our next student of the month, Mr. Cameron Willis, Cameron. Cameron is our kindergartner in Ms. Blakely's class, and Ms. Blakely had some very kind words to say. Cameron is kind to his peers and is always willing to help, he is a hard worker, always putting forth his best effort. He has made good progress this school year and has become more competent and willing to take risks. Cameron is respectful, responsible, and safe, always demonstrating the principles of our classroom social contract. Cameron is a joy to teach in the kindergarten class. I present to you Cameron Willis. All right, next I would like to bring up the proud principal of Einstein Elementary, Ms. Sarah Prozella.
Good evening, I am the proud principal at Einstein Elementary School, where we rise by lifting others so that everyone can shine as bright as we shine at Einstein. And I have with me one of our lovely shining teachers, Mr. Anthony Gatewood, he is our second grade teacher. We actually have a family affair today, because two teachers come up to me and say, we really love this family, we don't want to have to bring them back multiple times for Student of the Month, so we have our twins here and our older student here, so we have Liam Jones, Landon Jones, and Logan Jones out here. We can bring them all up, and Mr. Gatewood is gonna read about all of them.
Thank you, Ms. Prozella West, for giving me this opportunity to speak. I want to just say one note real quick about the Joneses. I had Larry, he's in eighth grade now, I believe, and Larry, he's one of a kind. But then I found out that his brothers, and you know that saying, you know, the apple don't fall too far from the tree? These guys are all golden apples, and I don't say I like, these boys are amazing, amazing. So let me just, I'm gonna read, I'm gonna start with Landon first. Ms. Jackson is their great teacher. Landon Jones is the epitome of greatness. He is respectful, accommodating, wonderful, and full of motivation. Landon treats teachers, classmates, and staff with courtesy. He is incomparable in his compassion for others, which makes him stand out from the rest. Landon is naturally driven to learn and succeed. He is truly an asset to our class, we are blessed to have Landon in our class amongst the stars. Now, I have the twins, Liam and Logan, and they are really dear to me, because I have a twin myself. And when I say dear to me, I call my brother, he's in Texas, and I talk to him saying, these boys are fantastic. I don't compare them to us, but these guys are the boys we wish that I could have been. Liam and Logan are eager learners, they consistently seek out challenging opportunities to expand their knowledge, they actively participate in class discussions, demonstrating a thirst for learning and a genuine interest in the subject matter, furthermore, they have consistently met and often exceeded expectations in their classwork and assessments, showcasing their dedication and commitment to academic excellence beyond academic achievement. Both Liam and Logan are valuable members of our Capturing Kids Heart second grade class. They are always willing to help their classmates, offering assistance and supporting when needed. Liam and Logan are also role models for their peers, demonstrating respect, kindness, self-direct courage, teamwork, responsibility, empathy, and perseverance. And their positive behavior in all interactions. These guys, I tell you, they are nothing short of amazing, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm so proud of them, and I'm so honored to have them in my class, I see, you know, I see, even though I didn't have Landon, I see him, I always say hi to him, they're all respectful, these guys are all, I cannot express my, I mean, awe when I see Larry, and then Landon, and the twins, Liam, and Logan. Thank you so much.
Next, it is my honor to introduce the amazingly wonderful proud principal of Pepper Elementary School, Mr. Emmanuel Haley.
What up, dough? Shout out to the board president for that amazing speech he did at the senior penning. Good evening, everyone, as it was stated, I am Emmanuel Haley, and I am the proud principal of the Dr. James and Pepper Elementary School located at two four three zero one Church Street. And I am just honeymoon happy, and to be here tonight to share with you some of the jewels of Pepper Elementary School. What you all have to understand is Pepper Elementary School is not just an elementary school, it is a way of life. So, without further ado, I will present one of Pepper's finest teachers, Dr. Omatola Olarole.
Thank you, Principal Haley, good evening, everyone. Good evening. It's a great pleasure to be here as a doctor, okay? The last time I was here, I was Mrs., now a doctor. And I'm the proud, very proud teacher for students with autism spectrum disorder at Pepper Elementary School, like Mr. Haley has introduced me. And it gives me a great, great, great pleasure to be here, and the fourth student that I'll be recognizing today is Braylin Berkeley. Braylin is not here today, please go ahead. Braylin is not here today, but I have his mother's permission to share, because I actually asked, I said, do you give me permission to share about Braylin? How Braylin was two years ago when he transferred from another school district to Oak Park Schools? And she said, of course. Okay, so when Braylin came to Pepper Elementary School two years ago, he faced significant challenges. It was so significant, and he exhibited lots of challenging behaviors, which I think I'll just keep, what you can imagine. Every day, almost every day, I went home using medication. And I also changed my heels for my gym shoes. So I won't tell you what he exhibited, you know, the behaviors that he displayed, but you can't imagine for me to change my shoes. And Braylin came, he made it clear that he was just at Pepper to watch YouTube, nothing but YouTube, lady. So get this work off me now. And today, I'm very, very pleased to tell you that Braylin has made remarkable progress, and he comes to school happily, then he used to tell us that I hate school, I hate school. But now I have even Braylin on record saying, I love school, I love school. And his attendance and reading have really, really improved, and he tells us that he just loves us. And shout out to you, Ms. Lockhart, Braylin's month, for all the support. Now I'm going to move to the second person, because Braylin is not here. And the second student of the month is Zion. My first contact with Zion was on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, three years ago, at Key Elementary School, when I was invited by Principal Murphy, now Director of Curriculum, Director Murphy, to come support the classroom. In all honesty, I came back, I went back to Pepper looking for my medication. Because Zion was just running around the classroom that day, and I have your permission to also speak. You remember, I asked you this morning, I said, you give me permission? And Zion was just running around, and we were trying to get him, by the time we go there, he would move to another place. And I went to Principal Haley, I said, please do not allow Director Murphy, then Principal Murphy, to ask me to go over there. That's a joke, I did not really say that. So when Zion showed up the following school year, as I was standing by the door to welcome the students the very first day of the school year, and this boy showed up, I said to myself, thank you, Oak Park Schools. And guess what, I, we had to, I actually had a meeting with the staff, with my pariah. I, we had to, I actually had a meeting with the staff, with my paraeducators, that we just have to change our behaviors so as to better support him. Zion is just a student that needed more support and love. And we were able to provide Zion that. Today, as you can see, he's not running around now. He's standing by me. Zion's attendance have improved. His academics and his behaviors have significantly, significantly improved. And Zion is very, very mannerable. He comes to me sometimes, and he goes to the support staff, and he will say, thank you, Ms. Ho, thank you for helping me. There was a day he actually took the palm of my hand, and he kissed it, and he said, thank you. And that was what Zion, that was more than a paycheck for me. And so Zion is also a great mathematician. He's now working on double-digit addition and subtraction with regrouping. In fact, he has mastered that. So both Braylin Berkeley and Zion Ward are wonderful testimonies that students with autism spectrum disorder can achieve great successes with the appropriate support. And lastly, before we take the picture, I'm going to give a shout out to my wonderful paraeducators, Ms. Coy, Ms. Jones, and Mr. Missing, for their dedication to our student success, because without them, I will not be here doing this today. And a big thank you also to you, Ms. Missing. And you also gave me permission to say this, right? Because I asked you this morning, I said, is it okay for me to say that despite your being a single mom? And you said, Dr. Ho, add full-time, right? She said, add full-time. Despite being a full-time single mom of three wonderful boys, she takes care of business of supporting Zion. We have a very, very strong home slash school communication, communication and connection. So thank you, everyone, for inviting us to be here today. Well, we invited ourselves. So I present to you Zion Ward. If you can come out for pictures, thank you. Let's do it, let's go. Thank you, Eshe Goni, which means thank you in my lan- Nigerian language.
It is now my pleasure to present the proud principal of the Oak Park Preparatory Academy, Mr. Douglas Island.
All right, thanks, uh, Mr. Haley, appreciate it. Uh, my name is Doug Allen, the very proud principal of Oak Park Preparatory Academy. And this evening, I have the pleasure of honoring two of our wonderful students, all right? Our first student of the month, Adrian White. Come on up, Adrian. Good to see the family and representation up in here today. All right, so, um, Adrian's teachers had this to say about him. He has demonstrated the ability to maintain focus during challenging social situations in the classroom. He is committed to achieving academic success and consistently shows respect and consideration towards his classmates. Adrian's teachers state that he is a true leader with a bright future ahead of him. Keep up the excellent work, man, congratulations. We got swag bag. Come on, come on up, let's, let's get it, come on. We got yard socks.
That's my baby.
Y'all give it that one more time for Adrian White. Our next student of the month, Ms. Trina Trinity Staples, sorry. Trinity's, uh, teachers had this to say about her. She exemplifies both academic and social leadership. She consistently demonstrates a commitment to educational advancement and makes sound social decisions that positively influence her peers. Her teachers state that she is a true joy to have in the classroom. Keep up the fine work. We got swag bags. All right. Man, we represented that. All right, coming up next is the wonderful and beautiful principal of Oak Park High School, Ms. Renita Williams.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Renita Williams. I am the principal at Oak Park High School, home of the Knights. And I am proud to present our Scholars of the Month for October. Our first scholar that I want to present to you all is Mohammed El Mabarak. So this is Mohammed, and he was nominated by his teacher, Mr. Han. Mr. Han states that Mohammed is one of the most dedicated students he has ever had. He is a 10th grade scholar who is enrolled in AP English, English, Language Arts, uh, and Composition. He, uh, is also taking, uh, AP Statistics. Yes. Um, he shows up every single day on time and works tirelessly to do very, very well. In addition to academics, Mohammed is a three-season scholar, uh, excuse me, a three-season athlete, but he does not let his athletic abilities and his interests get in the way. Mohammed is the whole package, the whole package. Mohammed demonstrates excellence in academic performance, character, behavior, effort, social responsibility, and attendance. And you didn't hear it from me, but he's on track to be the valedictorian of the class of 2028. It is with great pleasure that the Oak Park High School Administration presents to you all Mohammed, our April Scholar of the Month.
Oh, Mr. Doolanhead, did she say AP classes? Is that what I thought I heard? Oh, okay, that's right, okay, I just want to make sure I, I make sure I wasn't mishearing.
Congratulations.
And my next scholar of the month is Christina Dayoo. Now, before I introduce to you who Christina is, and the awesome personality, very vibrant spirit, a beautiful smile, and she just, she loves school. She's a beautiful student. Christina was nominated by her teacher, Mr. Orlando. Mr. Orlando states that Christina is an amazing young lady that is self-motivated to learn and is also willing to help others who are in need. Christina loves 3D art. She is developing, she is a developing artist, uh, and interacts with digital programs such as Blender, ZBrush, and Substance Painter. Her favorite subject is English, and she loves writing. She's the second youngest of five siblings. Christina has good grades and plans to attend either Yale or the University of Michigan to follow in the footsteps of her two eldest sisters, who both majored within the healthcare industry. Unlike them, she plans to study criminal justice with hopes of becoming a lawyer. Christina knows she has a promising future ahead of herself. She has supportive friends and a very supportive family. It is with great pleasure that the Oak Park High School Administration presents to you our ninth-grade knight, Christina. And next, I'd like to present to you all Mr. Derek Falk, the principal at Nova Academy.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Derek Falk, I am the principal of Nova Academy. And today I brought some staff with me. I brought the fabulous Dr. Dennis Miles, and also the fabulous Katura Britson, and our new counselor, Mr. Stevenson. We're going to introduce our wonderful students, two fantastic 12th grade students who have done fine work here in Oak Park. So I'm gonna have Dr. Miles and Mrs. Britson to come up.
All right, I am Katura Britson, and I have the honor to present our student of the month at Nova Academy, Ariana Cash Forehand. Our wonderful senior here, just to read our little tidbit. Ariana joined Nova during her second semester of her freshman year. While the transition to a smaller school environment initially presented its challenges, she demonstrated resilience and adaptability. Through her participation at summer school and the credit recovery program, Ariana took initiative to get back on track academically. Since her sophomore year, Ariana has shown consistent academic growth, maintaining a strong record of mostly As and Bs for her grades. Upon her arrival at Nova, we always get a kick to talk about this. Ariana was quiet, reserved, often keeping to herself. She'll come in with her headphones on and just walk, you know, she'll speak and say hello, just listen to her music. She's sitting alone during lunch, but over time, she began to flourish socially and emotionally. And today, she is a vibrant presence in our hallways, in our school. So you can often now see her dancing and singing in the hallways. Oh, well, TikToking, I'm just saying. And she's always engaging and so willing to help the staff on a regular basis, including her peers. When we asked her recently about what prompted her change to this pos- this positive transformation, Ariana shared that she began to feel more comfortable and built relationships and made some friends. Looking ahead, she has identified several career interests, including becoming a fashion designer, attending, uh, maybe a welding trade school, or pursuing a flight attendant. She also stated that perhaps another plan would be becoming an American Sign Language interpreter. This was a path that inspired her by an ASL class that she enjoyed here at Nova. So we are incredibly proud of her, we are proud of her growth, and we are confident that her future holds timeless, limitless positivity.
I can do it. Grandma, bring it here.
Oh, she want a picture of her phone? Great, oh, great grandma, she said, let the record be known.
Hello, hello, hello. I'm Dennis Miles, the dean of culture at Nova Academy, and I'm here to present our student of the month, Mr. Nehemiah Black. Nehemiah, a student athlete at Oak Park who transferred to Nova during his junior year. He consistently demonstrates a strong drive and focus in the classroom and readily offers support in both, to both his peers and the staff members. Nehemiah is heavily sought by colleges throughout the country. He has 18 acceptance letters and 13 football offers. Nehemiah aspires to pursue a collegiate football while earning a degree in either sports medicine or mechanical engineering. Since enrolling at Nova, Nehemiah has maintained a record of academic excellence, earning mostly As in his classes. And whenever absent, he quickly makes inquiries regarding Miss- And whenever absent, he quickly makes inquiries regarding missed assignments. We are proud of Nehemiah's dedication and the measures he takes to continue to invest in his academic success. So at this time, that will conclude our presentations. Thank you very much, and you all have a wonderful AP evening. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we come to the meeting, part of the meeting where the public has an opportunity to address the board if it so desires. I want to remind those in the audience that public participation is one-way communication in which members of the public are asked to address the full board with the understanding that board members will not individually be able to respond. Uh, if you would please read the, uh, the public comment guidelines, Trustee Perriman Tanks.
Because the Oak Park Board of Education values public meetings, not just meetings in public, we welcome public comments on school issues. Speakers are asked to express themselves in a civil manner with due process for dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by public comments. The public comment portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a school board member or a school district employee. That disrupts the order of the meeting and are totally unrelated to the manner in which the member or employee performs his or her duties. Speakers should be aware that if statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, such comments may result in legal liability. Most comments can be concisely stated in three minutes, and the board respectfully asks that comments remain focused on the topic or issue and not be directed at specific personnel or a board member.
Are there any members of the public who wish to address the board?
Um, we have Crystal Bailey at the podium.
Okay, Bailey, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be here as always. I'm here on behalf of the City of Oak Park Juneteenth Committee, and, um, I have been passing out flyers while we've been in meeting, and it's about the Juneteenth expressions. So we have students that can express themselves and talk about what Juneteenth means to them. And they can win a prize of five hundred dollars. There, we have fifteen, um, entries that will win the fifteen, the five hundred dollars. Only fifteen people will win the five hundred dollars. And you can do a palm, you can just, however you feel like expressing yourself, a palm, you can write something, you can speak, you can record, and it needs to be at least three minutes. Uh, I also am interested in youth assistance, as always. Youth assistance, and I feel, well, I won't go there. But I feel like we need some more programming for youth assistance. I'm not able to get in the youth assistance meetings, have not been, um, told when they are youth assistance meeting. I know we have a liaison on our district, uh, board. I wish we could get that information so that the students can get information about vaping, anxiety, the opioid addiction, retail crime, which is the number one crime amongst youth, is retail crime. Most of our children are spending time in juvenile for theft, retail crime, and at-risk behavior. Uh, sex trafficking, ADHD, and all of these issues are happening before they get to juvenile. So there should be some intervention programs for this. How much money is the district contributing to youth assistance? Haven't found that out yet. Would like to get that information if one of the board members, the liaison, hopefully, could reach out with that information and provide it so that these students in our district can get the proper care and preventative information in their hands, as well as their parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other, uh, cards?
I don't have any.
Anyone else who wants to address the board? Okay, hearing that, we'll go to our action item. Uh, we have, uh, we have one action item this evening, which is the approval of Key Elementary Abatement Flooring and Paint Project. Ms. Keller, do you, I mean, anything you want to say, or do you?
No, I'm.
Okay, are there any questions on, on this motion from the board? Okay, Ms. Greer, would you please, please, uh, first of all, let's read the board. John Clark, would you please read the motion, please?
Of course. The Operations Department solicited bids in March twenty twenty-five for the abatement of hallway flooring installation of luxury vinyl tile, LBT, and painting of hallways and classrooms at Key Elementary. And whereas bids were received by the March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five deadline, and the following vendors were identified as the lowest responsible vendors. Key Construction for painting, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty plus ten percent contingency equal to one hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. YTI Office for flooring, seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars plus ten percent contingency equal to eighty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Certified Abatement Services, uh, fifty-two thousand, five hundred, including ten thousand contingency. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education approves awarding contracts to the above vendors for a total project cost not to exceed two hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars, with work scheduled from June sixteen, twenty twenty-five to August eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, um, the motion was made by Trustee Clark.
I'm sorry, I, I did have a long question.
Need a second.
A second.
Okay, so it was seconded by Perriman Tanks. I heard her first. Okay, now we have questions. Go ahead, Trustee.
I wanted to ask about the warranty, um, Tiff, excuse me, Ms. Tiff, the warranty that, that they're giving us for the, uh, work. Do you know what that is?
I can send it to you.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any other questions? One quick one, how's it, how are we paying for it? Where's it coming from? All right, Ms. Greer, please call the robe.
Perriman Tanks?
I'm here.
Madison?
Yes.
Elvin?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
And Scott?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you for that. Um, item, we're going now to item seven, A OPS Board Policy seven zero zero nine and six zero one two. Um, these, these policies, basically, I'll read it. Policy number seven zero zero nine governs volunteers within the district buildings, um, speaks to safety of schools, school district students, and the need for volunteers to undergo criminal background checks. Policy number six zero one two discusses visitors in our schools and notes the superintendent may promulgate administrative regulations to enforce this policy. I add for this to be on the agenda because there seems to be some confusion about these policies and lots of questions. So I want to make sure there are no questions and there's no ambiguity at this point. Trustee Corbin, are we good on these?
Uh, no, actually, we're not.
Okay, what are, what are your questions?
Okay, so the first one, um, that you spoke on, which is, I believe, six zero one.
The first one was seven zero zero nine.
Oh, seven zero zero nine. So seven zero one, seven zero zero nine talks about volunteers. But when you click on the actual, uh, Michigan Codes, it doesn't speak on, um, it, it, it doesn't match with our policy settings. So if you wish, you can pull it up and you go to, um.
Have it up, I'll just go.
Oh, yep, go to your seven hundreds, go into volunteers. And when you click on that Michigan Code, it does not match to what it's telling us in regards to iChat and, uh, what the procedures are.
MCL wouldn't talk about procedures. It talks about the law.
It, it's, yeah, I'm looking at the legislature, the, I'm looking at the.
But our procedure, our, our bylaws is what I was talking about, about what it's actually, it didn't match to what I was reading.
So I, I want to respond to that, to that question for you. You asked, you asked a question?
Cause I, I don't know. Go ahead.
You asked a question, though?
Yes.
Okay, so I want to respond.
I'm listening.
Okay, so those sections that are embedded in there speak to people who have been convicted, which is exactly what it's talking about in the section.
Correct. Who to be convicted? It doesn't speak on volunteers.
It talks about, like, people.
Okay, people.
Yeah, you're right. Conviction of a person holding board approval for certain crimes. Uh, there's another one.
So should we read this? Because you're saying it speaks about people, if, yeah, which is a person, if they hold a state bar approval, has been convicted, it's not, it's speaking what people? Cause this just said a state bar approval.
Each one of these is different.
Everybody has a state bar approval, or are they talking about, are they talking about the people? Cause it says if a person who holds, number two.
State board approval? You talking about the teaching one?
Okay, let's go back.
Person holding board approval for certain crimes?
I clicked on the Michigan Codes. That's, uh, actually, I'll tell you the number that I'm looking at here is chapter three eighty. If you go down, it starts talking about under three eighty-one, five, three. It says convictions of person holding board approval for certain crimes. Who is the board approval? Is it the volunteer person?
State board approval.
State board, who, I'm saying state board approval. Who's the person? You're not answering my question.
So state board approval would be someone who's in the education field.
Okay, so the volunteers, are they employees or they're from the outside?
This one is referring to volunteers.
And this is the one that's connected to our policies? So my question back again was, or my concern, was that these policies doesn't seem like they match up to what our policy reads.
They're listed offenses, if, so, the no individual may be permitted to volunteer if he or she has been convicted of a misdemeanor described in, or a felony that is a listed offense in those sections. So really, what we're referring to is we're going to the, the misdemeanors and the crimes that are listed. Any felony, any of the following misdemeanors, and you list those. So if you go under A and B, one, two, three, four, five, that's it. And in that, that, even on section five, it gives you references to other sections. So, uh, and then there are others below that. So if they are convicted of one of those crimes, then yes, that's a bar for them to be able to volunteer in our school.
Okay, thank you. The other question was how long? Cause it doesn't state, like, how far it goes back far as the criminal history.
If you've been convicted of one of those crimes, you cannot volunteer in our school.
Correct. So what if a crime comes up and it hasn't anything to be related to that? And it was, let's say, nineteen seventy-one?
Is it one of those crimes?
Nope.
Then perhaps not.
Okay.
Depending, I may have to read the whole thing.
So I do have a parent who gave me a call. Um, I'll, uh, give that information to, um, Mr. Abdullah, Superintendent Abdullah Hadid, because that parent had been previously, um, volunteering, and then when it, when her iChat came back, it was the same thing, but then she was told she couldn't volunteer. So that's why I was asking who's the person, but I understand the criminal offenses, um, for the volunteer. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so are we, are we good?
You said as long as they, so there's no, see, that's where the confusion was, because it speaks of criminal acts specifically to what you read.
Is that a parent?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let's go to the parent section, right? And what are the things I noted when we were talking about the parents? That's the next section. Um, they fall under visitors, right? And the superintendent may promulgate administrative regulations to enforce this policy. That's a pretty broad statement. That gives the superintendent the right to, to create regulations to enforce that policy.
Are you talking about visitors or the correct?
I'm under six zero one two now, but this is, but this is where they start talking about parents.
Oh, so you're saying it's referencing to parents?
This is where they.
So what if it's a cousin? What if it was a sister? What if it was a brother?
It does not just parents, uh, that it does, that are affected by this one, but it, it specifically mentions parents.
Well, it, it's actually a grandmother. I'm sorry, it's a grandmother.
And the superintendent may promulgate administrative regulations to enforce this policy. So it's not just related to only parents.
No, I get that, but what I'm saying is to volunteer, I, I understand that. I get exactly the crime that, or the offenses, excuse me, that are followed behind, um, when the background check is done. However, if a sister or a brother come in and they don't have those, cause this is, the, the point of purpose that I'm making here is that any of these crimes that's listed was not a part of the background check. So you answered my question in regards to, cause it, it actually happened, so I thought maybe I was missing something, um, when I was reading it, because I didn't see where, I mean, how she was, why she was violated in, or told that she couldn't go.
Superintendent Abdullah Hadid, and this is a one-off, a one-off situation, so I don't know that we need to get off into the specific case.
I did get off into it. I just, that's why I moved on when I asked her.
If you could communicate with me, the, the issue.
Who did you ask three times?
In, in my emails, when I, I asked you, who is the person, so I could reach out, and I copied.
Well, at that time, that person didn't want to even be bothered, but I understand.
Bringing it up in public, but I said, let me reach out, because I have the authority to discuss things that maybe the board cannot discuss, or nor would the parent want to discuss their background in front of everyone in a publicly held meeting. That's why I said to you, if you could give me their information, I'll reach out.
And I said that to that person, and they didn't want to, so that's why that.
Did they give us permission to discuss that person here?
I didn't, I, I, I didn't discuss a person. I said it was a.
Grandmother, you said.
It wasn't a person, meaning, I didn't say the person's name. Just like every person in this community is a, a aunt, a sister, a brother, a grandmother, so that's what I stated. I didn't state who it was.
Okay, so.
So moving on to the next one.
Okay.
Can I ask something?
Sure.
Sure.
Are you wanting to, like, find out what, like, how far back background checks go? Like, does it go all the way back to the seventies or?
Is that the, is that the, is that your question?
Like, are they?
I was waiting for it to finish.
Type of crime, are they violating, or just like what entails in this background check?
Well, when I went to the, the Michigan Codes, as, um, President Al, um, read it off, it, it stated those specific, um, crimes. But with the person that I spoke to, none of those crimes affect those descriptions. So that's why I brought it up, because I thought maybe I was missing something in the policy, or maybe I didn't comprehend well, but however.
Well, how far back do they check?
I asked that, I didn't get an answer.
I'm sorry, who, who, asked that of whom?
I asked, I said, how far does it, I was talking, I said.
Oh, what, yeah, the point is, if you've committed one of those crimes, it, it is what it is. So it, it goes back as long as you've committed that crime, as long as that background check can, 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 yeah. No, she was asking clarification, if that's what you were asking.
Did you just not just ask?
He asked clarification.
Okay. Well, he said as long as that, as long as it's on your record. Well, he said as long as that, as long as it's on your record, is that okay to say? As long as that crime is on your record?
I would imagine so, um Ms. Henderson has some, something she wants to say, go ahead.
Just for clarification, if there is a background check. And an individual goes to have their fingerprints processed, or we go and pull the background check record from iChat. If it exists and it and it's listed, it will show up on the background check. So some, so the law does specifically state that felonies, any felonies. Or any listed offense, which could be criminal sexual conduct, child abuse. Those are offenses at which we cannot allow someone to be employed or to volunteer within the district. In addition to that, there are some misdemeanors that are listed offenses as well. So I don't know who the individual is that we're speaking of, but if it is a misdemeanor. And that misdemeanor is a listed offense, then that individual will not be permitted to volunteer within the district.
And and I, and and I'd like to just quickly, I know you wanna say something, uh Trusty Corporate, there are a whole lot of other. References to other parts of the Michigan Penal Code that are not listed right here specifically. So maybe there's a catchall in one of those, though, you know, if you wanna, I don't know if you've sat there and went through each one of them. But it it may be there, it may not be, but go ahead.
I was also gonna say, going back to the um our policy. Um, it it lists those three uh codes, you know, three eighty. Uh five, one, five, three, four, I mean, three, five, three, nine, three, five again, three, nine again. So I I'm wondering, perhaps I will bring it back uh to amend, because it's confusing. Cause they all speak the same thing, cause when I read them all, they all speak the same thing, and I know why these were put here, because when we. Uh switched over, um our, we went from Neola. They basically put these codes here, cause before they had them listed, so everyone can read them, so now they made them, you know, links. So you can go, but I just wanna know why they, it's like extra, it's like they're, it's it's doubled, so.
It's it's not really extra, if you click on one of them, within that one, I see seven more MCLs. That it references, it's deeper, it's it's deeper, but.
So you're saying each one?
Allow me to finish.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
As a, as a district, our job is to protect the students. Now, in my experience as a superintendent, I've seen firsthand. Where people mislead others and not fully disclose. Things that we are privy to. I'm not saying this occurred, I'm saying sometimes people don't share the complete.
True.
Truth with us, but as a district, we have to protect, I mean, I have three parents here of children. If I allow someone to volunteer that has a criminal. I mean, all bunch of offenses, yet they're interacting with your children, how would you feel? That's that's my con- how would we feel, I I know I would be livid as a parent. That someone that has this was allowed to be interacting not only with my children, but other children, I would be mad.
And I, and I, and I.
Finish, cause he said I interrupted.
Go ahead.
What I said was if you look here, it it's doubled, so can we just remove?
What's doubled?
It's printed, I just read it, it's it right here, you see three eighty, one, five, three, five, then you look again, you see three eighty, one, five, three, five.
Well, that's A and then that's B.
That looks like A and A to me, sorry.
It's A and B.
I don't see a B.
It's B.
Here's an A and there's an A.
It's just saying, it's these two different sentences.
Yeah, they mean two different things.
Don't, no, they 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 repeating it, but it's it's.
It's two different.
It's they're saying two different things, in the two different sentences.
Referring to it twice, but they're not the same thing, their those sentences are not the same.
Sentence, each sentence is saying to go to.
It's just referring to it twice.
Same thing, I get it.
Are there any additional questions relative to either one of these um policies?
Either one, which other?
The two that, the two that we, okay, go ahead.
Visitors one you're talking about, yes, it is. So on the visitor one. It says that, well, first, uh we had an alumni class come and spe- specifically state. That they had been background checked. I want to know, can you show this board the policies? To get a background check for visitors?
That's the second one of the two, that's in.
What second one?
They're not visitors, if they're coming in to interact with our students, they're volunteers. So if they're playing a basketball game with our students, that is not the definition of a visitor. That is a volunteer, hence seven zero applies, whatever is.
So then if they're volunteers, then that doesn't.
Then that, everything applies, background check.
Where's that policy that say?
Seven zero zero nine.
No, 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 this doesn't say if you come and do a single event that you get a background check.
It doesn't have to say that, it just refers to volunteers.
Okay, wait, 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 wait. So, so wait, wait, I'm confused now. So you're saying that any event that we have in this district, everyone's gonna be background checked?
No, that's what you're saying.
No, I didn't say, I asked the question.
There's a difference between visitors and volunteers.
Okay, and I'm asking, how is it?
There a a class coming in to play a basketball game versus our students are not visitors.
So where is that?
A visitor is Miss America, Miss Black America coming in. And visiting our schools and saying hi to our students, there's a difference.
So she's a visitor?
Absolutely.
So you're saying there's a function, if there's a function, then you get background check, so.
What he's saying is that for the specific individual purpose that you just asked. They are not considered considered visitors, they're considered volunteers, and hence seven zero zero nine applies.
But that's not what, that doesn't read that. It it, a volunteer, I want to see where it says. That if you, okay, where is the pop- the procedure for when you uh pay for the exhibit, is that on the information?
So, so here's, here's, here's.
No, that was a question. I don't want my question to get unheard unheard.
Okay, go ahead, a- ask your question again, I'm sorry.
When a person comes in and they say, I'm interested in renovating. Or utilizing your facility. So, so when they come in to utilize the facility, what is given to them? And if what that is that's given to them, does it say that those people have to have background checks? So, we have a person by the name of Big Sean, he attends and a graduated from Cass Tech. He comes in all the time and donates money, he shows up with other people donating money. So you saying that he should be background checked? Hold on a second, I'm not done.
He comes in here, I want clarification on your, what you're saying.
I'm 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 making a point.
And I'm trying to get clarification on what you're, what you're saying, does he come here?
Point, the, I just said he goes to Ca- so again, just give me a second, let me finish, cause I already said that he comes, he goes to Cass Tech.
You said he graduated from Cass Tech.
And I said, okay, I'm not about to go this way.
That's what you said.
I said he graduated from Cass Tech, he comes back to Cass Tech, and he supports Cass Tech. He has an event coming up, I think in a couple of weeks or so. So my question is, is that I'm getting understanding, so, cause I don't get the volunteer and visitor. Combining if you renovate our facility, but if you're playing with kids, then you're a visitor, or if you're not? Is it only, does it only happens when you are involving kids? Because we've had events where kids, our high school students have attended these same, you know, events.
Is he renovating? What is he doing? Is he changing our blinds? Is he changing the carpet? Is he painting the walls? Cause what is he renovating?
This hypothetical does not apply to our school.
So, so again, I I didn't finish, but it's okay.
You did finish.
No, I actually didn't.
You did.
Cause I, okay.
So it, you you can't ask questions and ask, and ask ten of them and no one can respond.
So why don't any other district do a background check on?
We absolutely do.
We can't speak to any other district.
But you got smart and said that I interrupted you, so I'm sorry, wait. It's totally disrespectful right now, and I apologize when I interrupt you, but you just did it, so you gonna be the cat calling black, it's fine. So, back to what I was saying, I don't know why it's so confusing, because I'm explaining this. But what I don't understand is that it's a single event. And why can't I, as a board member, see it and read it? But you said that is somehow correlating. Y'all, can somebody else tell me how a visitor and a volunteer is the same?
Try, go, go, go ahead, Superintendent Abdulahad.
So here's the difference, if someone in the pol- in this procedure has not changed. Pat, has, have we changed this procedure on you? No, so this procedure has been precedes me, okay, predates me. So, someone wants to come in and rent our facility. Because they wanna do a Juneteenth event, no problem, please work with Miss Pat. Do they have to do a background check? No, because they're renting our facility. But another group comes in and says, we would like to partner with you to play a game with your students. And we wanna give you some money back, and we wanna interact with our students, volunteers. Hence, seven zero zero nine applies. My frustration is, it's clearly written here, but people misunderstand it. Instead of asking clar- clarifying questions, they take it to a public meeting and want to make a show.
So I'm gonna ask this question.
Am I wrong, Miss Pat, with what I explained? Has this been, would you say ten plus years? Ten plus years?
Okay, so, so you're saying that this uh has been there for ten years? That we've done background checks on those who has that's?
Volunteers. Volunteers, you're, they're interacting with your, your daughter went to school here. Your da- would you allow her to interact with a student that has a criminal sex, um?
So I'm glad you said that, you brought my daughter up, thank you, so again.
Whoa, 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 hey, 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 hey. We're gonna stick to the topic.
We are on the topic.
Okay, so we're talking about this policy.
Listen, I'm talking, let me finish, you'll see I'm talking about the policy.
You don't have to be so defensive.
I'm not, I'm telling you.
You've been defensive since you started, though.
Wow, okay. Wow.
It's it's turning into an argument, it doesn't have to do that.
Statements, are, are you done? So what are you doing? Is that a, a, a what up, though?
Let's stick to the, let's, let's stick to the topic.
Okay, what is you doing?
Are you gonna, are you, do you have something?
Okay for you to just sit there and stare at me?
Do you have something that you wish to say relative to the topic, Trusty Corporate, please say it.
If we're in the district, let me finish, if we're in the district.
Hold on, she's talking, she's got the floor, give me a second, she's got the floor, let her finish her and I'll come to you.
Is being renovated by whomever. Our students are in the community, they're gonna attend, so you saying that if our students attend these events? And these other people are still there, so should our students not attend these events?
That's, that, if their school is being rented and our students choose to go, that is on them, that is on their parents. That is not something that the district is res- is responsible for at that time. The shit, the liability for that event shifts to the ones who rented the the facility. Okay, go ahead.
Can we take a five minute break?
I'd rather we power through this, cause we got more to go, so, eh, I'm, we're getting ready to bring this to a close, okay?
Cause I think that we we we're going back and forth.
Yeah.
And, no, hold on, President, we're going back and forth, and then she don't have clarity, cause I I'm starting to have some clarity. Because it's going in a different direction. I understand, I worked under the superintendent for over fourteen years. And some stuff now is coming into play that, and I work very close to her, several, very close. And some stuff now is just coming up, and I don't, and I, hear me, and I'm not trying to be, you know, go back and forth. Uh with with policies, but some stuff now is just coming up. When we're starting to get a turnaround in uh alumnis coming to our district. And I understand, and everybody know me, our number one thing here is safety, definitely, hands down with me. You wanna talk about safety, that's me. So, I think that um some stuff, I think now is just coming up. That we started to get more alumni, not that we didn't, actually, when Dr. Cobra was here, we 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 had a whole lot of them. And they were here all the time, breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and uh hanging in the evening. And so, I think that before we start to just um put a lot of things in place, I understand things happen. But before we just start hammering down on stuff a lot of times, let's look at it, is it gonna hurt? Are people coming in um to volunteer, to come back and give to our community? That's all I, that's really where I'm at. I don't want that the alumni that has graduated from here. Cause we got some great ones that are definitely starting to come back, so our safety is definitely our number one priority. And so, um has all of this been implemented from years and years to come? I don't know if all of it has, and I have to say, I haven't been the chief of security, probably now, like four years. So have it all just been implemented, enforced um all the time, which it should have been, if it wasn't. And that's, and that's, and that's my thing, if it had not, if it should have been, then it should have, in in the past, and so, that's my only thing. I just don't want the for us to make it to where our alumni does not want to come back to us, that's it.
Thank you, Trusty Tyler, the, 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 um, the policy has been in place, as we've established for quite some time. I wasn't, I've been on this board for five years, this is year fi- in year five. And we didn't touch this policy relative to this since I've been here, so it's been on, uh predates me, predates uh Mr. Abdulahad as well, right? So, that's exactly what I think his point was, we didn't change anything. So maybe if it wasn't being enforced, like you, as you noted, then it should have been, I can't speak to what other superintendents did or didn't do.
So I I think that we just, I think that we just need to just make sure, if we're going to do this across the board. Let's just be consistent and not wait until a event happened, and then we gotta bring it up and get it made to seem as though. The board is 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 after Abdulahad, no, we're not, we're all together, and or either we're not assisting our community. I mean, we just, when you come in Oak Park and say a family city, I just want to go, yes, we're gonna be difficulties. And that's all family fallout, but we had to agree to disagree at this point.
Thank you, Trusty Tyler, uh any, before I come back to Trusty Corporate, any other trustees have anything to say on this matter? Okay, Trusty Corporate.
How much does, wait a minute, how much does it cost each time we do this?
How much does what cost?
The, the uh, the iChat.
We're not charged, we're not charged for iChat.
We're not, okay.
Trusty Corporate, Florida.
So the question that I asked, I just wanna get clarity, can you show this board the policy? To get a background check for visitors? I need, I need that to be retold to me, uh, cause you you stated something about they were like congru- congruent with one another.
So, you asked about the policy for visitors, which you you have it, right, six zero one two?
This, if you click on that, it that, it talks about teachers.
You you talking about six zero one two?
Yes, sir.
That's visitors, so you, if I click on the, you click on the link?
Yes.
It says powers of parents and legal guardians.
Okay.
That doesn't talk about teachers.
No, you read, go down, it does, it started to talk.
Board of a school district, public school academy, university school, or intermediate school district. Shall ensure that a parental legal guardian responsible for the kid in custody, the people enrolled in the school district. May do the following, review the curriculum, textbooks, teaching materials in the school, be present to a reasonable degree. And at reasonable times, subject to reasonable restrictions, controls, and limits. And the board of a school district, public school, academy, university school, or intermediate school district may adopt reasonable policies or guidelines under this section. Okay, what is your question?
So my question is, where does the policy show? About a background check for visitors? You didn't read that.
It also, it does, it 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 says underneath, so that, so that we're clear. The superintendent may promulgate administrative regulations to enforce this policy, that might be one of those.
So that, so then, I I believe that these. So that, so then, I, I believe that these bylaws need to be a little updated to be clear because it, it's not clear, but I get it.
You're not, but, in all fairness, in all fairness, we're not background checking. We're not background checking our parents. For, for the purpose of being present.
I was talking about visitor.
For visitors, now if they volunteer, let's just say, for example.
I get that.
For example.
So would.
For example, a parent wants to volunteer and, um, their student is in there. We're allowed to just do it one time for the year for that parent. Because that parent is volunteering to be a chaperone on a field trip. But now they're volunteering in this regard, that they're also not just seeing, uh, overseeing their child, but might be assigned to five kids. And because they're assigned to five kids, then a background check applies. They're not visiting, but someone comes into our building, uh, wants to give a, um, a speech. They come in, they're not interacting, they're, they're invited by us, by the senior sponsors to give a, a speech, visitor. That's why it is, is left up to us to decide because every, that is, is discretion for.
It says, and at the, at the end, the superintendent, right.
No, I get it, I, I get it. I'm the person that you've hired to im- to ensure that the district runs smoothly. You're acting like I'm just somebody like.
Let's, let's, let's save, save the judgments, save the judgments.
Right, so, it says, the last sentence there says the superintendent may.
Promulgate administrative regulations to enforce this policy.
Promulgate.
Thank you.
Okay, so are do, are, are we all set?
No, I wanna, I wanna address something.
This is gonna kinda be you.
I wanna address something that's germane to this.
Okay, but we're, once you do that, we're gonna move on.
So. These things about visitors and, 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 uh, volunteers, it needs to be a little bit clearer. Cuz if it was clear.
Would you like to make a motion?
If, if it was clear, then I wouldn't probably be having this conversation. Cuz I have been on the board long enough that I've never had anyone come to me saying that they're a visitor and they're being background checked. So, did anyone sit down and speak of that? Cuz you did. You said, did you wanna make a motion, I was talking?
I was trying to help.
Help me shut up?
No, that's not what I was trying to do.
That's what it sounded like, I'm just calling it as I see it.
I think you're being a little too defensive.
You wanna have something written out that what's a visitor and what's a volunteer, is that what you want? Like a visitor?
No, no, it ain't what I want, it's, it's the community.
No, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, yeah, cuz it's not what I want, I, I actually understand the safety. Cuz again, my daughter was a person who was violated here in this district, so I understand safety, no doubt. I, believe me, I understand it, but again, I was asking for it to be seen that, that the policy need to say background checks on visitors, however, we just had this spoke, this talk and, and it's a discretion thing. So I didn't, I didn't get that out of what I was reading, that it's up to the, the administration.
So you wanted to read that, what you're saying.
Would, would you care to make a motion for us to, to, to edit these?
I, I would like, yeah, I was gonna, I thought I had to do it at the, but yes, I can do it now.
The hours are perfect times.
I would like to, um, make a motion that, uh, is it Trum, who, who's the, is it Tillman? Who's, who's our attorneys for, for our policies?
I don't.
Miller Johnson, I, cuz they changed, Miller and Johnson. So, I, I make a motion that perhaps maybe, uh, once we have the, um, the policy written out for them to look over it and then, uh, make it where it's a little bit more understandable.
For those two sections?
For those, for sec- for, uh, six twenty, I mean, yeah, sixty twenty visitors and the, uh, seven zero zero nine for volunteers.
Motion's on the floor, um, is there a second? Okay, motion's been made by Trusty Corporal, seconded by Trusty Paramount Tanks. Uh, Ms. Greer, could you restate the motion for us?
Uh. Trusty Cobra would like to have Miller Johnson look over the policy and for sixteen twenty and seven zero nine.
Zero zero nine.
Seven zero zero nine for volunteers to, um, certify and simplify.
It was six zero one two. Alright, is there any question on the motion? First, do you have any more com- do you have a comment on that motion?
No.
Okay, any questions on the motion?
What are we?
She wants to have, in essence, she would like, and you can tell me if I get it wrong. Section six zero one two and seven zero zero nine reviewed for clarity and, and updates. Sound about right?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Um, Ms. Greer, please, please call the roll.
Clark?
Yes.
Cobra?
Yes.
Elvin?
No.
Madison?
No.
Scott?
Yes.
Perry Muntanks?
I am.
You gotta come with your answer.
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, please.
I, I will, I will have them come out here and do a presentation to explain to the board to the difference between a visitor and a volunteer. And that's why I make a request, when you get information from the community, pass it along to me so I can reach out. But when people don't pass the information on to me, how can we address that?
I understand your point, let's just have them take a look at it.
But I'll have them come out here and we'll pay the money and have them present.
Let's have them take a look at it for clarification, if there's, if, 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 if it needs to be any more clear than it already is. Let's just have them take a look at it and, and make recommendations, whether they've, that they either feel like it's on its face clear or that there's some language we can in- include to make it more clear. Okay, alright, let's move on, we got another policy to talk about. Uh, update to board policy five zero zero two, budget planning and adoption to replace existing policy five zero zero two. Superintendent, move ahead.
Yep, so, uh, if you recall during the superintendent's goals meeting, we discussed safeguarding the district's assets, fund balance, et cetera. Been working with Miller Johnson, our, our, our policy creators. Um, language, we went back and forth, I had a, a group review it with me. Uh, we looked for loopholes, we came up with this, we sent it over to Legal to review. What we're presenting for you is our recommendation for adoption and replacement to safeguard the district's assets.
Okay. Any question? Okay.
I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I look, when I looked, I didn't see it, go ahead.
When you say to protect our assets, uh, can you elaborate on that?
Finan- finan- financials.
Right, so elaborate like, cuz I believe it stated, uh, in regards that if we were to drop below.
Yes.
Okay, so if we do drop below, where we, where would we draw that money from to, to make it, uh, at that percent?
You, you reassess what you're doing, you're spending, so.
Okay.
In, in, in an example of that, you're at home, you're overspending more than you're bringing in. Therefore, you need to review how much you are spending and make whatever adjustments you need to, so you don't spend more than you're bringing in.
Understood.
That's amazing.
Great, sure, community enjoy that.
Okay.
Why, why wouldn't they, why wouldn't, why wouldn't the community welcome safeguard their own tax money? Why would the co- community not welcome that?
I'm talking about you explaining it, sir, I'm not talking about nothing else other than how you explaining it, sorry.
Okay, Ms., Ms. Greer?
Well, the, the policy helped manage the money wisely and, um, and to be open about it so they can reach the long term and the educational goals.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, it, this has gotta come back to us anyway, um, so this is the, the first go around, so we have to pass it or we have to vote on it, I should say.
So you gotta read it, and, and as a first read, you gotta read the.
This whole thing?
This is the first read.
Yes, Deidre.
Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Please.
Yeah.
Yes, I am.
Okay, five zero zero two, budget planning and adoption. The board is required to adopt a budget prior to July first of each year to be in place for the ensuing school year. The budget is a formalized statement of anticipated revenues and expenditures of the school district and includes all district fund categories that are used to carry out the school district's educational goals and objectives. The budget will be prepared and published in conformity with the most recent applicable governmental accounting standards for G A S D requirements and be maintained and will maintain, excuse me, and in-year general fund balance that should not fall below fifteen percent of the preceding year's revenues. The superintendent shall, at an open meeting, provide justification for any budget that reduces the in-year general fund balance. The superintendent is responsible for preparing the budget and its timely presentation to the board. Following adoption of a budget by the board, the superintendent will inform the board quarterly of the budget to the actual expenditures and anticipated variances that may occur during budget implementation and recommend any action that may be required to be taken by the board. When in-year fund balance falls below the minimum fund balance, the district will replenish shortages slash deficiencies within the following time periods. Deficiency resulting in a minimum fund balance between thirteen and fifteen percent shall be replenished over a period not exceed one year. Deficiency resulting in a minimum fund balance between eight and thirteen percent shall be replenished over a period not exceed two years. Deficiency resulting in a minimum fund balance of less than eight percent shall be replenished over a period not exceed three years. Prior to presenting the board with a budget that results in the school district's in-year fund balance falling below the fund balance minimum or at the board meetings following submission of the school district's audit with a fund balance below the fund balance minimum, the superintendent shall present to the board a plan on how the fund balance will be replenished in a publicly held meeting.
Thank you for that. Wonderful reading, I appreciate it, take a swig of water, you earned it. Um, again, no questions, so we're gonna move on then to item seven C, Oakland Schools two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Not you, do you wanna speak to this and, uh?
Um, we, you received it, um, and I think Pat put it in, but you could put it as an informational item if you want more time to review it. If you're ready to adopt it, uh, or to approve it, then you could make one of those two motions or you could just take it as an informational item, correct, Pat? And then review it and then bring it up to a vote, it's, it's however the board would like to proceed.
I think we can leave it at information unless somebody wants to make a motion for approval to tonight. We can leave it at information and, and deal with it at the next meeting. Okay, alright. Uh, item eight, call it closed session. For ease, for the ease of, uh, getting through this. Um, I move pursuant to section AC, the Open Meetings Act for the purposes, that, for the purposes of discussing strategy and negotiations related to collective bargaining agreement that we go into closed session at this time. Motion made by myself, thinking about Trusty Clark, any question on the motion? Ms. Greer?
Madison?
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah.
Cobra?
Yes.
Elvin?
Yes.
Tyler? Perry Muntanks?
Yes.
Trusty Scott? Oh, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, okay. Okay, uh. I trust Ms., Mrs. Fenderson is going to.
Yeah, let's just wait because we have the camera people here and other people.